All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for the February 26 meeting. Ms. Boak, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Spatafor? Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pellevenoglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Eight members present.
All right, thank you. All right, now we are to our minutes, February 12th, 2024. Vice President Hussein.
I would move the February 12th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. All right, motion passes. All right, we are to public comment on agenda items. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address council, now's your time. Please come up to the podium. You'll have up to three minutes and please state your name for the record.
Well, good afternoon. Tim Damon with the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce and pleased to be here tonight. President Garza and rest of the city council members appreciate the time. So here tonight, we've had an opportunity to talk to a number of people and obviously offering our support for the new vision Lansing downtown housing development and the dollars that are coming from the state to support that development. I'm not one, many of you know me, I'm not one that overdramatizes anything really, but I look at this and as I've assessed this over the last several months, I've shared this with a few of you, that in 1901, 12 business leaders in the city of Lansing came together, created the Lansing Businessmen's Association with their sole purpose of attracting REOs and investment to our region. That was obviously very successful, set our region and city on a trajectory for arguably 100-plus years and certainly not equating that to this today, but certainly sitting here tonight before you and over the coming weeks, you have an opportunity, we all do collectively, not only this governing body, but all of us in the community here as well, to really kind of set a new direction and course for downtown Lansing, whether that's over the next 10 years, the 20 years, the next 50 years. So obviously, you know that decisions you have to make are very critically important and we would never tell you to not go through your process, whatever that process might be, but certainly understanding that with the partnership with the state and the dollars that have come before us here and an opportunity to really kind of, I mean, not only invest in downtown Lansing, but bring more people into downtown Lansing and continue to see some energy and vibrancy and so forth. So again, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and thank you very much.
All right, good evening, President Garza, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. For the record, my name is Price Dobernick and I serve as the business manager of the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union here in Lansing. I'm also here, as Mr. Damon is, to support the New Visions project. Certainly a game changer for downtown Lansing and as many of you know, my focus is typically on local jobs and creating good-paying jobs with wages and benefits and training opportunities. And a lot of times I have to reach out and try to get in touch with developers. I did not have to do that with Mr. Genalozzi and his team. They actually reached out to us, which is refreshing and have made good, strong commitments to the building trades. We believe the project itself is great. The investment from the state, it could be once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, hopefully not, but it could be. And I just want to stress that, you know, on behalf of the plumbers and pipe fitters, we appreciate their commitment to Lansing, to our members, and we fully support this project. And again, we would, like Mr. Damon said, you know, go through your process, ask your questions, do your due diligence, but we strongly support this project. So, thank you for the time.
Hello, President Garza, council members. Aaron Pangborn, I am the business manager for the Electricians Union here in town in Lansing. Wanted to come and speak in support of this project as well. Not only will it provide all the jobs that Mr. Dobernick presented, but some much-needed housing for the city of Lansing, I think. So I'd like to speak in support of that. So, thank you.
Good evening, President Garza, City Council. My name is DeShawn Lee, State Rep. for Michigan Building Trades. I speak for all Greater Lansing Building Trades affiliates and we do support the Genalozzi project on the agenda this evening. We believe this project could revitalize downtown Lansing and stimulate economic activities for generating local construction jobs during the building phase of that project, also attracting new businesses and residents to the area once it's complete. I would also, it would be great to see this project constructed by local construction workers and also developed by a developer that's born and raised in Lansing, Michigan. So let's keep some of those tax dollars here in Lansing and stop watching them drive down the highway to different cities and different states. Thank you.
Good evening, council. David Ellis, resident of downtown. I've been sort of following in my own personal time this project since roughly, I think it was July when we had first announced downtown. And initially, I had many, many more criticisms with the designs. There was things I didn't like about it. It has come a long way with looking at these renderings in the right direction, especially, I believe, with the Capitol Tower. I live right on Walnut Street, so I'd be walking past that every day and that's come to a point where I'm excited to see that building. I'm hoping this is passed, but I'm also hoping that I have still some criticisms of the project and since there's such a large amount of public funds going towards it, I really do hope that the public is brought in to share some of their thoughts on changes that could be made and improvements to benefit everyone. Thank you.
Really undecided on whether or not I support any of this. Have been paying attention to it from the beginning. I think one thing I would ask is that council does their due diligence. This is, this right here, this turnout and this show-up is really hard to go against. So whether or not you had your own personal views on how this plan would go out or if the RFP was done correctly, all the questions I heard you guys say when this first was brought up, all the things that were asked of how did, you know, Genalozzi just immediately get this conversation, how'd that process go? Keep those same questions, get them answered. I think that Price Dobernick said it, you know, go through the process, make sure it's correct. I mean, who doesn't want to see a skyscraper in downtown Lansing, right? Probably, I don't know, the 400 homeless people in the city, but ultimately, right, we'll figure that out. So I mean, we can't keep using that narrative either. I think that's getting tiring, that we need housing and this is going to cure that solution, there's going to be a solution to that problem. Just talk about what it is. It's going to be a high-rise building that's going to attract people to the city to go to the ovation and to go to other issues and the things that are in the city and possibly to patronize downtown, that's fine, but talk about it for what it is. I think that that's what gets tiring is when we get things spilled at our face that this is going to solve our problems and propaganda is being listed. Like, this is just not what this is. This is something that I think in 2015, before I was awakened to all the issues in the city and I was living the middle-class life and that's all I cared about, this would have been top priority for me. I can remember coming downtown on Washington Avenue at Tavern and Tap and thinking to my wife, me and my wife are talking like, man, I wish I could live down here. There's not enough places to live down here. You know, and this would, this, this, this high-rise would have been exactly where we would have lived, right? Take me to the 10th floor. We actually live downtown in a high-rise now, but our rent's $900 a month, not comparable to what this building is going to be. So just, I'm asking you to take all of this stuff into perspective. It's not just our dollars that are being put towards this, this is state funding. There's people in the waygo that are paying for this building. So I just want y'all to be responsible when it comes to that. This, this issue, as well as the issue of City Hall, there's lots of dollars coming into the city. This is probably, like everybody else has said, a one-time deal. Get it right, man. I just, again, I always make the statement that we have a thief in the house and I'm not saying that any of these people are, but if we're not investigating how all these things come to be and you just get stuff thrown in your lap without any type of conversation around it, I think that we're, you know, your guys' job is to kind of protect us from that and do your due diligence to make sure that we're not getting a raw deal that 20, 30 years from now, we're going to be complaining about. So just make sure it's right, is all I say. If we get a 30-floor building that's, you know, that's attached to the ovation, like, that's amazing. Who doesn't want something like that, right? And again, I think the only people that wouldn't are those who are suffering right now and need immediate shelter. And so if that's what this grant was for, if that's what this money from the state was for, then stop framing it like it's going to solve that problem and do your due diligence to make sure that we're doing right by this money the state's giving us. Thank you.
I'm Norma Bauer and I'm really glad that this came up because obviously, there's a lot of homeless people here and a lot of, they cannot pay $900 for rent and then get hit with an assessment because they didn't read the fine print in the lease that said, when you need a new roof, you get to pay for it. I think that's wrong. The people in Austin, Texas, of all places, found out that people don't need housing so much as they need companionship and they had that under the Kalamazoo Street Bridge. We don't have the kind of climate here that they have in Austin, Texas. And it's not your fault that HUD puts the old people over here and the disabled people over there and the ex-fender somewhere else. That's not on you. But I just want you to remember that you can't really build yourself out of a homeless issue as long as HUD keeps doing what it's doing. So think about that and thank you for your service. I really appreciate you.
Any more additional public comment? All right, seeing no further public comment, we will move on to our presentations. So we're at item B, Lansing Building Authority Financial Report 2022-2023. Mr. Kilpatrick? Please come on down the well and make sure your mic's on and...
President Garza, Vice President Hussein and council members, thanks for this opportunity to present the audit for 2022-2023 Lansing Building Authority. As those of you who've been around a while know, Lansing Building Authority is set in place and Jim can go into history of all sorts of building authorities around the state and the city, but really, it is to develop projects and in the city, it's been primarily for parking developments. And so really, Lansing Building Authority in name owns some of the parking structures that it, or parking facilities that there is debt instruments still on. And the city, which is really the parking enterprise fund, then pays through the building authority that pays down that debt. In this report, you will look at the net financial position, kind of is improving. What I, I'll point out a couple pages that just sort of piqued my interest and I'm sure you will have some questions. And again, I'm an engineer, I'm not an accountant, I don't do financial audits, but I can get with folks that can make sense of some of these terms. But really, we have debt in here that goes through 2039 and 2040. Some of it will be paid off here and a lot of these bonds are initially were partially refunded, completely refunded. So if you were to say exactly what assets are on the books right now, it would be going through all those bond documents to look back, but it's essentially, it's parking assets. And we can look at, well, I mean, so basically, if you want to look at the financial highlights and I apologize, I assume you have this in front of you, but if not, we can get, okay, very good. Page four really just says the net position increased by, you know, $2 million and really what that is, there's revenue that comes in and there's expenses that go out essentially for bond or debt payment. And so we took in more than we spent and long-term, if you want to look at page 15, at the bottom, there's sort of a schedule there and you will see the total general obligation bonds and the payments by year. And so those will go up and down and really, they're in the, you know, million-plus-ish until you get to the 2029 to 2033 period, so that five-year period, it jumps up to about 1.4 million. And then the next period, 34 to 38, 2.2-ish million dollars and then drops back down to 1.75. So really, a lot of this, looking at the whole, the system and the building authority, I wouldn't be so concerned now as in the future because a lot of this is kind of backend-loaded and really depends on the financial viability of the parking system to pay at that point in time because it's really the city that's on the hook, but the parking system operates the facilities for the city. So if there's revenue that comes in that does not pay the debt payment, then the city is on the hook for these general obligation bonds. So I think those are my tabs. There is one finding, this, if you looked at some of the other audits of the city, a material kind of entry, journal entries that they've talked about, needs to be kind of stronger on the accounting practices and a lot of that's due to staffing and year-end kind of journal entries to make things balance out. So that's kind of my presentation and again, if you want a kind of glossary of accounting speak, there's some stuff at the back, but essentially, with the building authority, it is, we have assets in the name or for the city, but the, it's sort of a pass-through that we get revenue through, we pay bonds for that debt and then, once those are paid off, those assets are transferred to the name of the city of Lansing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. Ms. Linden, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right. All right, well, I appreciate your presentation. Do we have any questions or concerns or comments from council at this time?
Come on now. I mean, I looked through this whole thing and tried, there we go, all right.
I'll see.
Councilmember Brown, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you for being here today. So it looks like, as you've indicated, that we're on an upward trajectory. Would you say from the last five years, we only have 2022 and 2023 in front of us, where would you say from, you know, five years ago to today?
I think it's stable. Really what you'd have to do, and I don't have these in front of me, you'd have to look at the actual leases and what the leases call for to know if the net financial position is getting better or worse. I know with the city, when they look at refunding bonds, they want to look and make sure that the, the building authority is stable, so we're not coming to the city to pay those. And if that's something you'd want to look at more like a long-term pro forma for the building authority, that's something we could, we could get for you. But again, it goes to the leases on each of those for those bond repayments to see where those, those assets would be moving forward. And again, my concern would not be short-term, but when you look at the outlying years, when, when this debt is, a lot of that is kind of backend-loaded to make sure that at that point in time, there is sufficient revenue coming in from those leases or even if it's on paper, there's sufficient revenue. Parking would have to be able to have the resource to pay those at that point in time, otherwise potentially, the city could be on, on the hook for making up that shortfall.
So that would be nice if that's something you could provide. Thank you.
We'll work on that, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. I guess just a follow-up to that and you may have answered, I was looking through here. Now, as far as the concerns when it comes to the backend, do you guys have a plan in place now to address those concerns?
My assumption would be yes, but again, I'd have to look at what those leases are and we'd have to look at the, sort of, with the parking system, I would say parking system was fairly stable until COVID and that really turned everything upside down. I know things are starting to get better, but it is not like it was 2019 yet. So really, long-term, I would say it's still a concern to make sure that the financial viability of the parking system is strong and we can look at, you know, anyone can make projections, but are they realistic or not? And even some of those leases or those arrangements were probably based on pre-pandemic type of revenue from the parking system. So I think it's something, it's a valid consideration to look and make sure that is those projections and that revenue is still there. And if not, then we should kind of know that sooner rather than later. And there may be some bonding that would have to, again, be refinanced and pushed out even further, which I don't really like because long-term, that means you pay more interest. But if that means the city is not on the hook because parking system can make some lower revenue projections, I think that's probably a good thing to look at.
Okay, well, thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Kilpatrick?
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, thank you. All right, moving on down the line, we have a general, let's see, we are on presentation C, General Fund Status Report Fiscal Year 2023-2024. We have Mr. Jake Brower and, all right. So this is General Fund Status Report Fiscal Year 2023-2024, Second Quarter. Please make sure your mic's on and the floor is yours.
Yeah, so my name's Jackson Hills, I'm the city's budget analyst.
I'm Jake Brower, Chief Strategy Officer. A pleasure to speak through the chair.
The floor is yours. Thank you.
So I'm going to go through the FY '24 second quarter that ended December 31st of 2023. So for FY '24, the city originally adopted a budget of $152.9 million in revenue and $159.3 million in total expenditures. However, as of 12/31, the amended budget has total revenues $156.6 million and expenditures at $165.4 million. This difference will be made up between leftover ARPA revenue loss money, which is around $8.3 million, and then use of fund balance, which is $515,000. This $515,000 use of fund balance comes from the approved budget amendments allocating money for council carryforwards and $15,000 and then $500,000 for storm damage repairs. Now, as of the budget amendment that was passed la, two weeks ago, the use of fund balance decreased to $55,000. And as of 6/30/23, the general fund balance is $29.66 million, which 20.9 million is unassigned, which leaves us 13.9% fund balance ratio. As for the general fund revenue, those were collected in the amount of $92.4 million, which is 59% of the amended budget. So the biggest portion of that, property taxes, was make up over 32% of general fund revenue. Those are largely collected at the beginning of the fiscal year and those are in the amount of $50.9 million. As for income tax, which is around 27% of general fund revenue collections, were $13.1 million and those numbers are about 2% lower than the three-year average. And obviously, we are monitoring that very closely and if needed, we will present a budget amendment to city council around the third quarter if needed. Return on equity, which is about 17% of the revenue, represents payments to the city from BWL and those are trending upwards. State revenue, which is about 15% of general fund revenue budget, are estimated to be $23.2 million and quarter two is higher than the three-year average. Just kind of going over some of the other ones, I know fines and forfeitures were down and this is because civil miscellaneous fees and ordinance fines and costs are down compared to previous years. And as for interest and rents, the interest income is down due to a sort of timing issue between the bank reconciliations where we record the interest income and when this report was submitted to council, which was the end of January. I will say, last year's interest income alone was over $588,000. This year, it is through two quarters, $360,000. As for expenditures, general fund expenditures are trending below the three-year target by about 3%, which is 45.3% of the amended budget. Just kind of going over some departments, the mayor's budget, which is 54.8% of the budget, has been expended so far. Same thing with income tax numbers, we are currently monitoring this and if needed, we will be presenting a budget amendment, if needed. EDP has gone through 50.2% of its budget. This is mostly due to the fee study that was conducted. And for finance, it has gone through 50.9% of its budget. This is primarily due to temporary help and overtime for the audit that was completed in December and January. Now, I can go on to the vacancy factor if you would like or I can stop for questions.
Do we have any questions at this time? Vice President Hussein?
It sounds like it would be an assumption at this point, but what are we attributing the lower income tax to?
Want to answer that or? No, this is something that we're watching and we're particularly paying attention with the April tax deadline coming in. We did have, I was just trying to remind myself of how much time the OEW was on strike and how the ancillary impacts of that. We're still seeing impacts from the state government working a hybrid schedule. They're not in the office full-time yet, so we're really looking at just what is the activity, how is it going to increase? We were seeing last year's results come in very high and we were, we had adjusted for that in our early budget amendment. Now we're seeing it come in at a slower rate, so we're watching that. And if we don't see a tick back up, we'll see a budget amendment from us in the next quarter. But that is something that we're watching. It's very sensitive to month-by-month, day-by-day fluctuations, so we pay a lot of attention to that figure. But that's a very good one to watch and even as I look at the numbers, I always take these quarterly reports. There's the three-year average, which is the average for the time. I just take the actuals divided by that average and I use that to ballpark where it might be at the end of the year. And so that would suggest that, that pretty much we would have to adjust our initial estimate down. However, like I said, we're watching how the income tax returns come in, so do your taxes, do them early. It's always great to have that off your back.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions at this time? Ms. Linden?
Is this all being taken into account for the new budget also? Because it feels like income tax being lowered because of remote work should have probably been considered for this current budget, so want to make sure it's considered for the next one as well.
Ms. Linden, can you make sure your mic's on?
It is on. It is on.
Yep, and the answer is yes. I was just looking at revising my back-of-the-napkin estimates from earlier in the budget cycle to what we project now. We also have some preliminary information from the state's consensus revenue estimating conferences. There's about to be another one and however long it's going to be, but we should have estimates on the, that side. We've been talking to the Treasury Department on income tax estimates, Treasury, and assessing on property tax estimates. So overall, what we're seeing is that, to give you a preview of what you're going to get in about a month from now, property taxes, this year, it's a pretty steady revenue. We're right on with budget. Next year, taxable values are increasing about 7%, 8%, which will be good for the city. Income taxes, we're taking into account the lower year-to-date average, so that might be comparatively flat compared to our other revenues. Our return on equity payment, this is one that our contract with the Board of Water and Light is coming due at the end of this year, so that's going to be something that you see around the same time as budget is, do we renew the agreement under the same terms? In fact, if you have any, anything you'd like us to look at as part of this agreement, now is a great time to bring it to our attention, free discussion. State revenues, we're looking at about half a percent on the constitutional revenue sharing by early estimates from the governor's budget, the January consensus revenue estimate backed by 10% on the statutory side, which is the smaller portion of our revenue sharing. 5% of that is one-time in the governor's proposal, 5% is ongoing. Overall, that amounts to, between the two numbers, about a 2.5%. So we're seeing support from the state, income taxes, other revenues that come in at a much smaller percentage of our budget, really being relatively flat or even decreasing relative to inflation. And then property taxes are holding us up on the top end.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, during the budget process, those revenue numbers all seemed pretty high, so hopefully we're taking a look at that and I appreciate the regular budget amendments and looking at it more conservatively this year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Follow-up from Vice President Hussein?
Just very quickly, do we internally, do we have conversations when we look at revenue streams such as fines, such as charges for services? I'm trying to think of a few other. There, I mean, obviously, the number of vacancies we have, vacancies we have in the city impact those numbers. I think a lot of times when we talk about vacancies, we talk about issues with service, lack of service, decrease in service. We talk about, you know, sometimes it's a positive savings to the city, but we don't talk about, you know, the impact that it might have, as an example, on some of those revenue streams. As a matter of fact, a lot of those vacancies, if they were filled, they would actually cover themselves essentially. So do we, do we internally talk about that and the impact that the vacancies are having on those particular revenue streams?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And does that direct or guide us in terms of prioritizing what we're posting, when we're posting?
Yeah, and so certainly, we're looking at positions that are, A, essential, we can't get along without them, these are our mandated responsibilities. But second most, we look at what are revenue generating positions. So if a position costs, say, $100,000, but it brings in even 25, 50,000, we take that into account versus are we going to approve a position that is 75,000, but... into account versus are we going to approve a position that is 75,000, but infringes in benefits, but only brings in, or doesn't bring in anything and doesn't really add any, provide an essential function, or do we bring in something that might pay a little higher but cover a good portion of its cost? So, and I think I saw the mayor raise his hand, or?
All right, Mayor Schor.
If I may, I would also add, I encourage everybody to take a look at, at all the positions that are currently posted. I know Elizabeth is here, there are many, many, many positions posted. I know, we certainly prioritize what she posts, positions as soon as they become vacant or sometimes before they become vacant if we are front-loading. That is, a lot of times, it's the staffing, not being able to get the staffing. You know, certainly, when you look at our assessing, you know, our assessing department is down, what, five or six positions, and we can't, we can't find people for it. So, Sharon is getting creative and trying to teach from within and trying to get folks, so we certainly want all those vacancies filled, because those vacancies filled will be good for our city and good for the work to get done, and we have that conversation a lot, but please take a look at the, at the postings that are on, that are up online, because we put them all out there and our hiring staff are very busy with interviews and background checks and all of that. So, it's, it's, it's something we talk about at least once a week at Cabinet, and I think Elizabeth and Jake and others talk about it a lot more than that.
All right, thank you, Mayor Schor. Yeah, I'm happy to hear that, sounds like Raleigh Van Fossen, our new code development and planning director, has two code officers that they're getting ready to send a letter to, hopefully they hire him. Okay, if you want to continue, you guys want to continue on the vacancy factor?
Yeah, so, there was a total of about 57 vacancies in the general fund in Q2 and around 100, or, and around 56 in other funds. So, this total, just about $1.4 million in vacancy savings for Q2. Overall, the general fund vacancy rate is 9.25%, which is down almost 7% compared to last quarter. This is primarily due to the Lansing Fire Department having gone from 34 vacant positions in Q1 all the way down to 10 in Q2, and Lansing Police Department went from 32 vacant positions all the way down to 20.
All right, thank you, and I guess, I just have one comment on there, you mentioned that we have, you know, our vacancy factor of 1.473, you know, million, cost and savings, but I guess I would have to, you know, make a little rebuttal to that, kind of like my Vice President Hussein said, how many of those positions, or can you give me a list of how many positions are like, for instance, code or building safety, something that generates revenue to the city? Because I guess I would say that we're not really saving if we don't have those jobs out there, you know, collecting the money for our city.
Yeah, and certainly, there's, if you look particularly at the enterprise funds, those generally operate as business activities, so they bring in revenues to support their costs, having generally little or no general fund support. So, when we're looking at, say, our building safety, there's a building inspector supervisor, plant review supervisor, mechanical inspector, these are positions that would be going in, out and providing services and then billing for those services, getting those back. Parking, customer service representative, maintenance worker, parking revenue ambassador, these are positions that would be working within our parking system, supporting the activities there, and so on and so forth. There's additional positions within, as you can see, our finance operations, assessing treasury departments, these are directly collecting revenues, code compliance. But, yeah, overall, we are just being very aggressive on hiring positions, it doesn't really serve us well to keep these positions open and not utilize them, so we're pursuing those very actively. I'm talking to all of my friends and starting to annoy them at this point, at which I keep telling them, hey, wouldn't it be great to work for a local government, doesn't have to be Lansing, could be anywhere else, but, hey, it's really something to serve the public and get value out of your.
So, we're going to see you on TV as a spokesperson for the city soon, let's take it.
I might, I keep talking to people in board meetings and saying like, hey, you know, we're hiring, you can become an assessor in two days in a course, and there's a level two assessment with six months of training, and then after a few years, you can become level three, and we can be hired within our assessing department, be making 60, 80,000.
Yeah, I see that, okay. HR, I hope you're paying attention, you got a new spokesperson, right? Okay, we do have a question down here, Councilwoman, Hilevani.
Thanks, I just have a real brief question, and this may be better suited to ask Human Resources, and I'm happy to do that as well, but because you have pointed out that Lansing Fire Department went from 34 vacant positions down to 10, and then the Police Department went from 32 down to 20 vacant positions, do you happen to know within the next six months or even three months if we have a large number of pending retirements that are coming up to where we're going to see another dip in these areas specifically?
I defer to our HR director on the specific numbers.
That's fine, I can ask that, I just didn't know if you had any idea or any kind of ballpark.
No, it is a number that I frequently hear our chiefs paying close attention to, our HR director paying close attention to, so it's something that, particularly with our police and fire contracts, it's a lot easier to predict if someone's eligible to retire, mandatory retirement dates, that, it's, yeah, we definitely get a little nervous and sweat inside and plan our hiring sprees to coincide with those retirements.
Thank you.
All right, it looks like Mayor Schor's comment.
Sorry, I don't mean to keep jumping in. We can probably get you the numbers of who's eligible to retire, but they don't always retire, which is a nice thing, so we don't know for certain, especially with cops and firefighters, oftentimes, we will front-load. We have done that several times, we will over-hire the positions we're eligible for and knowing that some people are going to retire and sometimes people don't get through the academy and things like that. So, the number came down, I want it to be zero, I want it to be negative, so that we're front-loaded, and we're actively doing that, and I think it's a benefit to this body that the contracts that were recently passed have been very, very helpful. We're out right now with fire and we're, we're finalizing some of those folks, we hope to get that taken care of, we need more paramedics, as the council president continues to remind me. So, we're, we're working on all of that, but we can get your numbers on who's eligible, it's just a matter of how many people actually take the retirement.
No, and we'd like to thank all of our bargaining groups too, we've worked with our IAFF in particular on the paramedic issue and improving the incentives for that, among other things, so we'd like to thank our unions, the people who come to work every day and give us all they have.
Thank you. We do have another question from Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza, thank you all for being here. We all have, of course, identified and articulated the need for hiring to decrease the vacancy factor, so if I understand correctly, we currently have 113 vacant positions, is that correct?
That may have adjusted as of this snapshot, so this is a particular point in time, but yes, it is a rather large amount of vacancies, not the worst in the state, but we do want to reduce those.
Okay, and then how many positions do we currently have open that people can apply for?
Be a good question, now, you can go to lansingmi.gov/jobs, I believe it is, and take a look at our open positions, I believe, yeah, you can come up. I'll trade places, Larry, HR director, or she can jump next to Mark.
Yeah.
Hi.
Good evening, thank you for coming up.
So, if we want to start with how many are posted right now, we have 21 posted.
Okay.
But I also wanted to add a qualifier to that. So, yes, there's 21 posted, some of those are continuously posted, but our specialists are working on about 35 processes, and this could be anywhere from screening applicants, their resumes, their experiences, to conducting assessments and testing, and also interviews, and creating the questions for the interviews, and submitting offers and negotiating with candidates. So, total, yes, we have 21 posted, but there's also 35 additional that we're working on.
Okay. Thank you so much for that, and then to, and I know you guys are working hard and we've, you know, talked about it over time and had you come up, that you guys are really growing, expanding, making sure that everything is equitable, changing processes, utilizing technology, and really looking at that, and so I know that everybody appreciates that. On a strategic level, Jake, while I was asking the question as a strategy officer, overlaying, what are we doing strategically to help, I guess, empower and equip HR? The processes, the things that need to change, as well as the staffing, so we're going from 113, you know, and having 21 open and 35 in process, to something more significant, so when you're out there advertising, then we're able to also have a pipeline that doesn't create a bottleneck for that support, so we can see a change in that process. So, was there something strategically that you're working on in your department?
No, absolutely, we're in frequent discussion between the two of us, talking with all the matters of HR. One thing I want to commend our HR department in particular is that they're an early adopter of many now considered best practices when it comes to equitable hiring, so when our job description or job applications come in, they're anonymized, they go through a series of practices that are designed to ensure that we do not have bias within our hiring practices, that we're hiring as many people for their qualifications that will do the best at their job, and Elizabeth can talk about some of those measures, but it's, they're doing an exceptional job, and really, when you see the numbers come down in the past quarter on some of our vacancies, you can see that some of these measures are taking effect.
And I think we're also, you know, maintaining the integrity of the process. Each of these positions, we review and analyze these applications because we also consider equivalencies. So, this is not a quick, like, check the box, or the system's going to auto-screen this to where it's just very quick and we just move them on. I mean, there's a human looking at each and every application to ensure that we are following best practices and promising practices, and also ensuring equity and fairness in each of our processes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Elizabeth, are there any positions that we're not filling purposely?
I can only speak to the positions that we've been requested to fill, we asked department directors to give us priority list. I think Van Fossen in EDP is a great example, and we meet with him on a weekly basis to talk about what his priorities are with respect to his department, and that's how we move. We move on the basis of priority with the department, so I don't really have discussions on not filling things, we're too busy trying to get these things filled, to make sure our specialists are comfortable in their processes, that our processes are defensible, and because it's in the best interest of the city.
And the reason I ask is, I see on this list, there's a vacancy for when I graduated high school in L6 for an electrical technician, so that just piqued my curiosity if we're holding positions open, or if we're looking for an electrician, because I know that the union's here tonight.
I haven't been told to hold a electrical position open, I mean, that's really not, as I previously said, not really something that's, oh, hold this open for no specific reason.
I didn't think you were, I just see the date, I was curious.
I'm sorry, are you done? I'm trying to speak.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Ms. Leary?
Yeah, I was trying to say that I haven't been told to hold a specific position open, so if there's also, if there's positions that we need to, you know, take a look at, then happy to give you a status update.
I appreciate that. You also, Mr. Cost, you got a follow-up? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President, I was going to say, President Wood, President Garza, I was just asking the overall question, as the chief strategy officer, what is our, you know, and there's several different areas within the city that we're looking at, how are we creating improvement and implementing those improvements for relating to a strategic plan? And so, when we're, I know HR is doing what they can, and, you know, you've been very transparent, we've seen a lot of change since you've started, so I think that's not even the question that I had, is what are we doing strategically to make sure that we're moving the needle forward organizationally when we're having deficiencies that have come up on several occasions? Another area, when we're talking about, you know, being strategic, is the Finance Department, they've been having material deficiencies, and Desri has done a wonderful job saying, hey, we need additional support to address this, whether it's technology, staffing, and so on and so forth. So, strategically, council has been approving supports, and then we're, you know, for example, the last three or four years, we went from several deficiencies to a few this year. So, that's something strategically, we're saying, while the department is moving forward, we're also having a overlaying strategy to help support their initiatives, and everyone can support the common good for the city. And so, that was my initial comment, I just wanted to make that clear, I know that we, now we have HR appear unexpected, but I was really talking about the strategy, such as with the Finance Department, the HR, and other areas that we're having challenges, because as Mr. Mayor indicated, we have positions open, but people are not applying for them and they're not working for the city, so what else can we do besides, when they do come in the door and HR is processing them equitably and fair, what else can we be doing to support that department? Because if they're doing everything they can for the people that are coming in, then there should be some other support that we can empower and employ to see a systemic change. Thank you.
No, thank you for your question, and this is something that, through the entire budget process, we kick this all off with a focus on what is our strategy for the upcoming year, so all of our directors met together and took some time out of their day to discuss specifically what are our challenges, what are we hoping to address in the upcoming year, and how can we go about that? And so, as we go into department budget meetings, where we're meeting with each and every director and their department staff to discuss their budget requests, these are meetings that are happening across the past few weeks and even going ahead into next week, where the mayor's in the room, we're in the room, finance, and we're talking about these issues in particular, so I'm taking a look at what departments have submitted for budget, I'm looking at their vacancy list and saying, hey, why aren't you hiring these positions? If you're not hiring these positions, I'd like to take them out of the budget, and so no one's, very few people have volunteered positions that they absolutely don't need, and those that have too much on their plates, we can gladly assign new union positions from one department to another, and better serve our people by not holding them off in one place. And so, we're aggressively pursuing those vacancies, we're getting past, like, just moping about our problems, oh, we can't hire, it's like, okay, what are we going to do about that? And actually, whether it's increased advertising, it's better communication, having the mayor in the room has been particularly helpful, because the department says, oh, well, we're having this problem or that problem, and the mayor can say, well, hey, have you talked to so-and-so or this person, or?
I appreciate that, Jake, and I was just going to follow up real quick, because I don't want to belabor this point, we got some other presentations to go, I'll call in you one second. I guess, I think, and I'm not trying to speak for Councilman Brown, but in the past, we heard that there was a long process, maybe too long of a process from start to finish, and I think maybe that was, if there's been any strategies to shorten that window.
Yes, thank you for that question. So, my team is currently working on also making changes to the hiring process. We've gone through a process where we've taken feedback from directors, from employees, we've digested that feedback, we are coming up with an executive summary on the changes that we can make, this has taken a little bit of time, because we want to meaningfully go through this information and see what we can do with, with also respecting the best practices and keeping an equitable process. So, there are some ideas that we've come up with, they have not been finalized, because we actually took this to our HR hiring specialist and our lead hiring manager, because we need the buy-in. They're the ones that are the boots on the ground, that are interacting with these employees and these applicants, and we needed their, their buy-in for this, and they came up, they came up with a lot of the ideas as well, and how we could decrease time to fill. So, that is coming in the next coming months, we're actually very excited about it, the hiring process hasn't changed in a long time, and I think COVID kind of gave us a realization of, like, things have to change, and so we're excited to take on that challenge, and, you know, we're doing that in addition to filling these vacancies as quickly as we can. So, I think changes like this take time, because we want to do it right, we don't necessarily want to do it quick, but we will, we're definitely going to be making those changes. Also strategically, we've been looking at positions that we can grow from people that may not have the credentials but want to do these positions, such as like the mechanic position, which we're working on. the mechanic position, which we're working on, a trainee position that could eventually move up into a mechanic position. I mean, this has been a hard-to-fill position for a long time, and so I'm thankful that we have our union partners to work with to help us see how we can grow our own. I think the seasonal position is a great example. It's your entryway into the door. You have the opportunity to get the CDL and Andy Kilpatrick shop. And there's lots of city employees wanting to help and wanting to mentor. So those are the kind of things we're looking at, is how do we get people in the door that may not have all their credentials, but get them trained to eventually get those certifications?
Perfect. Thank you. Do we have any more questions for council, from council? See no further questions? All right. Well, I appreciate you guys being down here. Thank you. All right, moving on. We are to presentation D of the new mixed-income housing facilities in downtown area as proposed by Paul and John Genalozzi. Gentlemen, please come on down to the well. And council, you should have a pretty packet with a bunch of pictures in it right in front of you. So please feel free to go along with this. And City TV should have a copy of this as well.
President, could we move the table just a few inches, so we can make sure we know what you see?
Sure.
We just want to come over a few inches.
Yeah, make sure that microphone doesn't fall off the desk, though.
We have a last minute addition with your permission, Chair, could I just stretch this down?
They have it.
Both?
You sent me the email earlier today, so it's printed in their presentation.
Thank you. We appreciate it. I would like, these are the public.
Oh, okay.
President Garza, to the council, thank you for the opportunity for us to be here.
Oh, I guess that helps. As I sat through the beginning of the council meeting tonight, or the committee of the whole meeting, I'm kind of a person who goes back in history, and I was thinking hard about when my first council meeting was. It was 1962, and my father was before council, getting the Stoddard Building, which became the Farner Building, which became the Louis, getting that final approval to be constructed. He was the director of construction for Michigan National Bank. And I was almost 12 years old, sitting in the audience. The room looked the same. The faces looked the same. Different people, but the same commitment to our city. So I want to applaud you for everything you do. I know it's a tough job. I came the first time for our, my first project in 1970, was a 17-unit apartment building on MLK at Dorchester Circle in South Lansing. And I've been coming here so long, I remember a young Jim Smirtka. The first time. There's some things in our city that have withstood the test of time. So we appreciate, we know we're on somewhat of a timeline. I'll quit babbling and move on. Thank you. One of the first things in our presentation...
I think we're just waiting for it to come up on the screen there.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Yeah. So you go ahead and click to the next. I brought my official clicker with me.
Your official clicker has failed.
There we go. There's a little bit of a delay. So this timeline, I'm hoping you've had an opportunity to look through it, because it talks about how we got this appropriation. And I think that's a very fundamental and essential topic, because it didn't happen, the tooth fairy didn't come by and say, let's do some housing downtown. We want to, we want to help fix the problem that was created by the state's closing of state offices in the private sector building. I would like to highlight a couple components. The state's canceled more than 350,000 square feet in our central business district, which was always their right. We lived off the fruit of business with the state for 50 years, and those days are gone, at least under the next administration or so. But the economic loss to our central business district of $6 million a year is a compiled loss from tax revenue, spending, jobs. I'll give you a great example. When we built the Grand Tower, 3,000 people worked there every day. They came into the city, they spent, on average, about $30 a week on food and retail buying. And between the Grand Tower and the state police conversion, there were 4,200 people that worked there. Checking with DTMB last week on Wednesday, there were a total high population of 1,010 people working between those two buildings. So we lost 3,500 people in our central business district that has had a prolonged and eventful impact on our restaurants, on the other businesses who are there to serve those people who work in those buildings. So almost two years ago, we relocated to our Victor Building, and I thought, I'm gonna go down and see my friend Gary at Cupid's. Been friends with Gary 60 years, since we were teenagers. And as I walked down Washington in front of Kozicek's, the thing that I noticed was I was the only one on the sidewalk. Now, that was disheartening. Disheartening, not for me, but disheartening for our city. And having worked downtown since 1964, as a stock boy at NAF's Capitol Avenue, downtown has been my business home. It's where I've made my living. It's where I feed my children. It's where my father fed our family. So it mattered. And the question was, how can I participate in fixing this? So my objective, the very next day, was to start the process, the political process, and don't misunderstand what I'm about to say. My objective was to guilt that establishment into helping us. The legislature created the city of Lansing. It wasn't that it was a convenient truck stop, or a train stop, or a river stop. The legislature created the city of Lansing to be the center of government. So we are the byproduct of that legislature. And part of it is the administration, who decides where people work, where they go to school, where they buy retail things in our community. We know now that it's changed. The other impactful part of this is, the people who work downtown today don't work as much in the Grand Tower. They don't work in the Victor Building. They don't work in the Hollister Building. They work in the state complex, two or three blocks away. So the everyday trip to the Travers Pie Company, or Cupid's, those trips are over. They pack their lunch, they drive their car somewhere else, or on a nice day, they walk down. But the everyday trips to our central business district, by state employees and a lot of other employees, are gone. So how do we bring them back? In urban planning school, they teach you that to have a successful central business district, people have to work there. After they work there, they'll shop there. After they work and shop, they'll live there. If you can provide those other two determinate variables for them, they will eventually occupy, and they'll live there. But the criteria today is, you have to give them a quality place to live at a good value. So how do we do that? And I'm hoping I'm not belaboring the point, but as you walk through that timeline, every opportunity I had to meet with another legislator, every opportunity I had to meet with the mayor's office, I had my best tapdancing shoes on, trying to sell why we needed an appropriation to make downtown work. Now, you're owed an explanation for, why do we need, why do we need an appropriation? I mean, there's brownfield out there. Why can't that help fill the gap? And I need to address that very specifically, because to build an urban environment, to build in the CBD, to build 300 units on 40,000 square feet of land, not a suburban apartment where we're building 12 units an acre, but to build in the city, like the units we looked at in Detroit, or Cleveland, or Cincinnati, or Columbus, all of those, all of those cities throughout the Midwest that are very similar, Grand Rapids and Kalamazoo, both have competing projects of the same nature. Both used extensive economic incentives to get those projects done, and all of those projects were done at an interest rate of less than 5%. So here we are. Money is 7%, seven and a quarter percent. Construction costs are $450 to $500 per square foot. So do we stop? Do we give in and say, we'll come back in five years and hope that there's still retailers downtown? We'll come back in five years and see if we can make this work to recover the losses we have during the next five years. We had a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with our legislature. They had an $800 million surplus, I'm sorry, an $8 billion surplus. And they were going to give these federal dollars away to the cities in our state, based on how many requests we had. Now, for five years, I sat on the Lansing Economic Development, on the MEDC, the Michigan Strategic Fund Board, excuse my, I'm old. I stood on the board, and I watched as we gave away $200 million over five years. 51% went to the city of Detroit. 51%. 24% went to the city of Grand Rapids. 4% went to the city of Lansing. No matter how much kicking and screaming we did, we got a disproportionate short. Flint got 9%. Everybody got more money than us. The legislature owes us. So I can say that directly. They weren't insulted, and we had the one-time advantage of having the appropriations chairs for the House and Senate.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
For the appropriations chairs for the House and Senate, and for those of you who work with state government, those are the two most important jobs in the legislature. They're the kings of how money is spent on cities and communities. So we had two of those chair from Lansing, who cared about Lansing, who listened intently to the story of why downtown needed this. So unabashedly, without hesitation, I asked for the money. And we got the mayor to help support us, and as soon as we could, we started introducing what happened to city council. So I think it's important to get it on the record for how this happened. If you talk to Senator Anthony, or Representative Whitwer, or Sam Singh, who was absolutely essential in helping us get this money. All of the presentations we did were based on that. So let's talk about, the money's out there, and why, why do we need it? Why do we need $40 million to build a $228 million project? What does it do? It is 50% of the negative in the balance sheet. To build a $228 million project today, and finance, let's assume, I'm sorry?
140, or the construction side.
Yeah. Let's assume we're gonna take a $228 million job and do it conventionally, and we're gonna finance $160 million at today's interest rate. Let me get to the factual number for you.
It's on.
There we go. It's in fine print, so help me.
No, here, go back.
I brought my smart guy with me.
Are you looking for the construction?
No, I'm just looking for the interest, the debt service.
Oh, should be right there. Minus one job, obviously.
Which one?
That one.
Okay. So the debt service is $10 million a year. Now, $10 million a year, based on somewhere around $20 million worth of gross income, leaves $10 million to pay all of the other related expenses of the project, which are 13 and 1/2 or 14 million dollars. So how do we make this work? We use the $40 million. We use the appropriate transformational brownfield numbers, and we have the developer put in 40 million, and we have him sign personally for another $140 million worth of debt. So people had been asking me about the capital stack, which we put in here. Now, the capital stack is a term that I deal with every day. It's part of our business. And it's easy for me to understand and explain that. The capital stack doesn't tell you what happens when you have to pay the loss or the deficit. So when we look at income and expenses, the debt difference between a 5% debt three years ago, or four years ago, and a 7% plus debt today, is $2.8 million of interest expense, a ghost number, because the bank gets it, but we don't get any value for it. So the probability of making this project work, the probability of borrowing 140 or 50 or 60 million dollars worth of debt, and having a developer put in 40 million dollars, is based on the opportunities of the moment. It's based on the city's brownfield. It's based on the state's transformational brownfield, and it's based on our desire and ability to take risk, because it's a risk. We don't have a competing market study property downtown that we can send the lender to and say, here we got this tower over here, and it's full. You need to give us this money, because it doesn't exist. When we go to Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids, they only built their projects on a $390 a square foot a few years ago, at an interest rate of 4 and 3/4%. So they don't have the burdens that we have. A tower just got finished in Detroit on the former Joe Louis site. Great tower, almost identical to ours. Same size. The rent in that tower is almost double what our rent is. It has no missing middle, and the $1,400 one-bedroom that we have in all of our projects is $2,800 or $3,200. So the difference is, we're in Lansing, Michigan, and our aggregate mean income at 100% is $62,000. Downtown city of Detroit, it's a significant increment better. So I've gone off talking about just the statistics of the package. Most of you know most of that information, I think, because I wanted to talk about the real work, and how do we make this work? If council says, I don't think we're gonna change housing downtown. I don't think if you bring 800 new people downtown, it's gonna make a big difference. I disagree. Professionally, I'm willing to risk everything we have to take this risk, and it's the last big job we're gonna do. I've told most of you that in person. We've done a lot of great big buildings in Lansing. We're really proud of the skyline we've left behind, and we're really proud of the reputation we have with those buildings. But we're doing this to change our future. Simple as that. If we don't get people to live downtown, if we don't give them a new opportunity to be attracted to Lansing, instead of living in Delta Township, or in Holt, or in Oakhamus, we have to offer something very, very special. That's the key component of why we're doing this, to offer a transformational project that everybody in Lansing can be proud of when they drive by. Everybody in the city can come and enjoy. My son, John, made a statement not long ago, some of you were in the meeting, that we travel around the Midwest, we go to cities, and we see things that we're impressed by. And we come back and we talk to our friends about what we saw in Cincinnati or Cleveland. The theater district in Cleveland has a phenomenal landmark multifamily building called Lumen, almost identical to what we're building. I bragged about it and showed... I bragged about it and showed many of you pictures. If you go to the Theater District in Cleveland and you see the Lumen, you walk away impressed. If you go in the building and see the quality and the value of what they've done and the six-hundred people they brought to downtown, to that district, you'd be impressed. So that's our objective. That's exactly why we're here, and that's the business reason of why we, number one, ask for an appropriation, and number two, why we've worked every angle in the process to make this a successful project. If we just said, "We want to build this project, and we think the rents should be twenty-five-hundred dollars a month," well, in three years, I'd have an empty building and a failure. So I can't make up what people in Lansing will pay. We can only do our best, looking at the competition. We've got great developers here. Pat Gillespie, good friend, great family, good developer, and his rents today in his best apartments are two-twenty-five to two-thirty a square foot per month. That's where we have to be, because we have to make a market. We have to convince people that being downtown is good for them and good for us. So that's the motive behind this. I'd really like to turn it over to my son John. He has, we're thousands of hours into the buildings we've developed to present to you, and he knows them best of anybody. So I'd like to have him walk through, you're bored of hearing my voice right now, and my position, but I really want to show you what our vision is. Go ahead.
Do you want to sit here?
No, I'm good. Just to advise President Garza, I do have a stopwatch going, so I'm aware of our time. Thank you. So we wanted to provide first a little bit of wayfinding help for everybody, and I realize that the council may have gone through this, but I'll just pause momentarily and let the audience absorb it as well. And as you can see, what we're talking about here today is three different sites. The Capitol Tower site on Ottawa and Walnut, the Washington Square Apartments and Parking at one-oh-eight and one-hundred South Washington Square, and then the Tower on Grand at two-seventeen South Grand Avenue. We'll start first with the Washington Square. So this is a rendered view of the building, and as you note, it looks exactly the same, and that's not an accident. It's a hundred-year-old building, has some wonderful historic features, some brilliant character inside, and we wanted to maintain that and celebrate that because it is a landmark building on a main corner in downtown. As we look toward the parking, one of the things that, obviously, there's been a discussion of parking this evening, and certainly we do appreciate that. One of the things that we believe is determinant for these projects to succeed is to offer people parking where they live. We're asking not necessarily a lot from people, but we are asking them to make a commitment. We're asking them to move from perhaps a suburban apartment into our downtown core. And one of the things that's going to be tough for people to give up originally is parking. So we're providing that parking, both to our residents and to the public through this space, so that we can bring people closer to the Washington Square. It also serves another more important purpose, perhaps, as downtown is concerned. It provides three properly-sized retail bays on Washington Square. Right now, the three bays that are in that building are very deep and very narrow, which is not what a retailer wants. They want window space. They want a short room so that they can bring people in, show their stuff, or if it's a restaurant, they've got a chance to really entertain people without sending them a hundred feet to the back of the building. So this gives us a chance to right-size the retail space that's there. We take another view here from almost City Hall, just kind of off to the side, and really, we want to also point out that in the Washington Square Building, there's three-thousand-eight-hundred square feet of retail space available on the corner of Michigan and South Washington. That is as important of a corner, I think, from a retail perspective, as we have downtown. It's in view of the Capitol. Almost everyone that comes through our downtown is going to see that space. We want that space to generate foot traffic, to generate interest. Here, we'll get to some of the floor plans, and I do apologize, hopefully you can see them well enough in your drawings. But what I mostly want to point out as we go through this slide is that because of the building directly to the south of us, MSU-FCU, the first two floors of our building has no windows on the south side. So in order to still produce productive apartment space out of that, the first two floors feature longer, deeper units, which end up being a little bit larger, so we are able to get some more two-bedroom units out of that particular location. I would also add the first five floors, up to floor five, are thirteen-foot-tall floor-to-floor heights, so it's a beautiful soaring space, and all of the windows also suit that height. So you get a lot of natural light that comes through. We'll move on to actually some of the views. Go ahead.
Could I add? We looked at the jobs you're advertising. Ninety percent of the jobs you're advertising can live in this building under missing middle.
Certainly any of them can. However, the salary ranges that were provided in the listings, all but two of them would fit within the missing middle salary window. And I think one was perhaps beyond the window, and one was slightly below the window, and those were the salary jobs that were listed, not the hourly. And certainly, the hourly could be possible as well. But I think it's a good point that when you hire someone to the city of Lansing, it's really difficult to say, "Well, thank you for coming to work here, but, gosh, we just don't have any housing that you can find around here." This is a project where you can say to someone, "You can live downtown. You can walk to work." So as we move from the apartment floor plans, we have some renderings of the apartment. So this rendering is of the two-bedroom apartment that's on the end of floors four through seven. I believe it is highlighted in a lovely gold tone, if I'm correct. And we want to just show a couple of views of what it's like to live in these places. And certainly, we focus, as all apartment developers do, on the kitchen space, because everyone is either really into cooking or has a place to put their DoorDash, as we kind of said earlier. We'll get another view next. This is looking from the kitchen out into the apartment space.
Three-sided windows.
And on that unit, there are windows on all three sides. Now, the rendering for this unit, and I say this a lot, but this is actually my favorite unit, so this would be the blue or the green unit that you see on the south side of the more common floor plan. Even though it's a smaller format unit, it offers great living space, a really nice bedroom, and you get views to the south, an unobstructed view to the south, which of the two views, the one to the north and the one to the south, the south is actually pretty nice as well, because it lets you see all of downtown. Okay. Next, we'll move on to Capitol Tower. And certainly, if you guys have any questions about what you're seeing, you can stop me. I'm trying to move quickly to respect your time here this evening. So Capitol Tower is--
We do have one question from Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Thank you all for being here. Just a quick question. You talked about parking for one-hundred South Washington.
Yes.
You may have missed that. Where are the individuals going to park?
One-oh-eight South Washington.
Middle of the block.
If you look on the main map, the first, the multicolored map that you'll see, you'll actually see two yellow parcels, one of which is the Washington Square Building, and then the other one is the parking garage location.
Where SD Print and DLI is, that building's being renovated to have new retail in front. Essentially, we're building a new building there. It'll have parking in back and above and new retail in front.
So this here?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're saying there will be parking?
That's actually parking on the two upper floors.
It's meant, architecturally, we didn't want it to look like a parking garage. It was important to us that we kept the theme of the city, that we kept a proper facade to these buildings, so that it doesn't look like we're only building a parking garage. It's very important that it looks architecturally like part of downtown. It's a unique location, so it deserves a unique treatment as it pertains to the adjacent facades.
Oh, thank you. So then, it's another parking space on why you're rehabbing that and adding the five-thousand retail?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you very much. So Capitol Tower, as I say, Ottawa and Walnut. It is the red project on the main map. And if you do recall, our original presentation for these projects featured a ten-story, very shiny, very round glass tower. And we lived, we sat on that for a while. We did some further architectural development on it, and Paul and I began to discuss that it just didn't feel right for that location. There were some other reasons why we had done it, to try and produce some construction efficiency with the tower, but ultimately, it was the wrong fit for that neighborhood. And it really, it didn't work, and so we started over.
This was the front door to Ms. Bealan's neighborhood. And those of you who have been around a long time, Ms. Bealan was one of the patriarchs of the council, and I, as we, the architects kind of looked at me funny, I said, "Lucille would never, never like this. We've got to do something else." Because that neighborhood is essential to our central business district. And Jim certainly remembers Ms. Bealan. One of a kind. And her flower shop was just a block to the north, and she gave most of her life to city councils. So it just didn't fit. So we started over, and we made something we think is representative of the neighborhood and the kind of units that John will discuss that the neighborhood deserves.
So one of the things that we did was provide some street presence to it. Initially, we had sort of a tower and then some surface parking, but really, there wasn't enough interest from the street to make it a productive project or to fit within that neighborhood. So as you can see, and we'll see on the next couple of slides, we're going to produce some townhomes on the base level of this, so that you can walk in and out of your apartment, onto the street, and connect yourself to the rest of downtown. It isn't that you enter the tower and you're never seen again. There really is a connection, and I'll show you on the next page. I realize that is hard to see, but hopefully in your packet, it's okay. You'll notice off to the bottom-left of that drawing, in some of the dark green space, we have seven rectangles. Those seven rectangles will be a second phase of this project, which will also feature three-story townhomes for rent. So offering another way to live in downtown Lansing for someone who might desire that. You can see on the right-hand side, sort of rimming the outside at the street level, are the walk-up townhomes that we have. And it's, this is the building where we have office space built into it. As we said to a number of people, we're not building this space on spec. We're in serious negotiation with tenants to occupy this space, and they're very much on board with this. And we, you'll notice in the lobby area, we sort of have two separate directions that you can go, one for living and one for working. And we do that because we don't want people to feel like they're working in an apartment building or living in an office building. We have to, we have to offer a nod to both of those activities, that it is theirs, for example. As we go to the next slide, you can see an elevation which sort of helps you put together the breakdown of the building a little bit better. You note where those two-story townhomes are. You can see that it's four levels of apartments, two levels of office, with the amenities and lobbies mixed in there as well, with underground parking. So again, in, you know, it's, we have a lot of surface parking in Lansing, and you can certainly make the argument whether we need it or not, but in this case, we felt that putting the parking below the building offers a better service to our tenant and a better look to the city overall.
One of the things about the townhomes is they're intended for families. There isn't a place, if you want to raise your family downtown, the seven new largest townhomes will all be three bedrooms. The other ones are sixteen-hundred-foot two-bedrooms, and a great place if you had two children, to raise your family within a hundred feet of the state capitol in our central business district. So we needed to change the personality of this to not just be for young people, but to be for professional people who, of any age, wanted to live in and around downtown. We have a place for them here.
Next slide is another view, looking down Ottawa Street across Walnut. Just another glimpse of the entry and sort of the monumental column that fronts the building at the edge there. This provides a view down Walnut Street. As noted, pardon me, we wanted to show where the entrance to the underground parking was and just give you an idea of the feel of the building from a couple of different angles. So this is the inside of the building. Obviously, we do need some surface parking for both apartment and office guests and just some general utility parking across the site, but we do still have the opportunity to produce more green space than we would in the alternate arrangement and really provide some community spaces, some entertainment spaces for the residents that live there. We're very proud of this particular feature where you'd be able to stand on an outdoor balcony and look at the Capitol. You can't have a building like this without being able to really feature the Capitol in that space. So it's an outdoor amenity area that has views of the Capitol all the time, and we really think that's a, I don't know that there's another capital city that would offer something similar to that. So that is one thing that's going to make Lansing unique as part of these projects. And I'll pause for a moment if anyone has any questions on the Capitol Tower site before I move on.
Any questions on Capitol Tower this time? All right, seeing none, please continue.
Next up, the Tower on Grand, I think probably the largest object in the room, certainly, and certainly the most exciting and most expensive piece of this project. So we are two-hundred-and-ninety-two units across two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of living space. That does not include the additional space within the podium below, offering the amenities, the restaurant, and the apartment lobby. This button and I do not get along.
There you go.
Okay. So we wanted to give a typical floor plan and a section through the building. As you can see, toward the bottom, we have the two-story lobby, a large retail space there, about twenty-five-hundred square feet, would be available with frontage on Grand Avenue. So as we talked about bringing people from Washington to Grand, to the river, and then beyond, we wanted to offer some retail space there for a clever use, or certainly one that would enjoy access to two-hundred-and-ninety-two apartments, which I'd imagine most retailers would be in favor of. What we're showing for the floor plan is the fifteen-unit floor plan. There are different floor plans as you go up. We may switch them around a little bit from what you're seeing here. As we reduce the number of units on the floor, so say, for example, when we get to the penthouse floor, what we're doing is combining adjacent units so that we can maintain the stacking of the plumbing and electrical and all of the other features in the building.
I should note that the twenty-second floor is actually the twenty-sixth floor of the building. There are four floors in the podium that we don't count, and we stack on the first occupied residential floor. So the building's twenty-six floors tall.
Moving on. Here's the lobby, looking at it across Grand Avenue, so this is looking east across Grand Avenue. And certainly, one of the messages that we got when we first began meeting with the city were some bad memories of the old North Grand Ramp walkover, that it was felt to be very dark and uninviting. Here, we're thirty feet above the street level, and we'll be providing architectural lighting to light that space, to make it interesting. The apartment lobby that you're seeing here would be on the left-hand side, and then the retail space would be to the right. Another view, and we start to get a view of the amenity level. And certainly, the first time that you guys probably saw this project, it was a larger amenity level. We've kept about the same footage, but we've shoved that further toward the river to allow people to enjoy the river more. And it really does connect the amenity space better with the building. And we, you know, we certainly recognize that here in Lansing, outdoor activities are not exactly on everyone's to-do list in, say, November, or we got lucky this winter, obviously, but we have to combine the space with the indoor space so that we can really use this space twelve months of the year. Here, we've got a view from across the river. Basically, this would be standing at Ariol's looking west, showing as-- So that level there would be the amenity level. Below, we have some work-from-home spaces, lounge spaces, and then private dining rooms. And so there's a concept that we carry throughout all of our developments here that we've discussed today. If you, for example, live in a studio apartment, but you have a large family and you want to host some holiday or a special event or a Super Bowl party, and you say, "Well, gosh, I can't fit twelve people in this apartment." We've got what amounts to the size of a large conference room. We'll have a full kitchen equipped with plates, dishes, all of those things, as well as large TVs and some seating and things like that, so that you can reserve one of those rooms and have your own party with your family in a larger, more enjoyable space. And in the case of the tower, we have some on the lower levels, and we also have some on the roof. So the rooftop for us is activated with both amenities and some of these dining spaces, because we want everyone, even if you live, if you've chosen to live on the fourth or fifth floor because you're not a huge fan of heights, but you want to show somebody the view, certainly, there's a way to do that. Here, we have another view of those amenity spaces.
John?
Yes, sir.
Just one sec.
Of course.
People that are just getting here, we are still in committee of the whole. We have, see, it looks like we still have four discussion action items after this presentation, so bear with us. We will probably take a short recess after we're through the committee of the whole before we start council. before we start council.
So you can start to see the amenity space, and as I said, we've, we've moved a lot of that cross both into the building and onto the river.
Two swimming pools, one outdoor on the deck, one indoor for 12 months a year use, pickleball courts, barbecue pits, all of dog walks, all of the things, half-court basketball, all of the things we've talked about. And they're universal to the building, so that the balconies on the east side that have visibility to the river will be activated on this same schedule.
Here we are, another view, sort of looking down the river. You can start to see some of the rooftop spaces at the top of the building, and just a little bit more of the architectural character of the building. So we did a little bit of work in Google Earth, and I, I did check that before the meeting. You can see from that space, from the rooftop space, you can see into Delta Township pretty healthy. And to East Lansing, in the other direction, certainly you can see, you can see the stadium. I don't know that you'd be able to skip out on a ticket and watch the game from the roof, but certainly you could see where the stadium is. And then, obviously, from, from DeWitt to Holt, you've got some visibility.
Watch a great deal of a baseball game at Lugnut Stadium, though.
At least the outfield.
Yeah.
So a couple of slides here, you know, highlighting the sort of crossing over Grand Avenue. You can see off to the right, some, some truck space. One of the things that you learn very quickly about a 300-unit, 250 or 300,000-square-foot building, is that you're going to get a lot of Amazon packages. You're going to get a lot of deliveries. You've got a restaurant that needs deliveries every day. So loading space and utility space are serious considerations that we had to provide some room for. Nicely enough, we can sort of use the existing space that's near the Grand Tower to get some access in and out of there. The next slide, and really, I'm not trying to show you the, the entry again. I'd like you to look more to the left, and you can see about a, and I can tell you, it's about 15 feet. And that space is meant to be a public easement, to allow people traverse back and forth from the Riverwalk. We feel it's really important that we respect what's on the river, and we respect the Riverwalk, and do what we can to activate it. So we've got seating and observation back there. It, it just needs to be a nicer, more pleasant place to sit and reflect on the city. Our, our hope, certainly hopefully, working with the, the city, we can get the rights to cantilever that deck out a little bit farther, so we can provide some more room and let people have even more enjoyment of the river.
What you see here is on our land. We want to make public access to all of this riverfront. So if we get more permission from the city to cantilever over theirs, this is a, this little extra walk is $350,000 of supplement that we're going to spend to get people of our city activation to the river. And it's only a portion of the additional $500,000 we're going to spend to construct on the city's behalf a crossover bridge from one stop to the south, over to the Arioles Museum and the Impression 5 Museum. When we built the Grand Tower 30 years ago, 32 years ago, we built a public park on the corner at the river, and a, and a public observation. Well, over the years, the state fenced it off, and we had the opportunity to work with the mayor and the public, and the park staff the other day, to show them that they, they own this, and it's a valuable asset, and it's the most logical spot to connect the other side of the river. So if you're in our building, or in the Grand Tower, or in the old state police headquarters, and you want to go to the shuttle for lunch or dinner, you can walk over. You can use the public access. You don't have to, it, it doesn't have to be a get my car. If I'm in my car, well, gee, why don't I just drive to Delta Township? We need this connectivity to be convenient for everybody downtown, to help build a unity that we don't yet have.
So, that is the end of my architectural phase of the presentation. Can I answer any questions for anyone on what you've seen so far?
All right, well, thank you. We do have Councilman Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is mostly for father. I heard you say that, I think you were talking about the Capitol Tower before you tossed it up to your son, that everyone in the city can come and enjoy it. I guess for the record, can you explain, like, what do you mean by everyone can come and enjoy?
Well, we're building intentional. When we talk about our public spaces, first of all, in a, in a apartment building, or in somebody's house or yard, there are private spaces. Everybody can come to the restaurant. Everybody in the city can come to the restaurant in the Tower on Grand. Everybody. The, we're not building a park for everybody in the public, but what we are doing is building riverfront access for everybody in the city. So our intention is to make open. We've taken a big part of our riverfront, but from a public access, everybody's welcome in our lobby to go to our restaurant, to, not our restaurant, whatever restaurant ends up being the tenant there. And everybody can use our riverfront access.
And just to follow up, I heard you say there was basketball? Did I hear that?
Yeah, we built two half-cords. I'm not a big pickleball fan.
Pickle, wait, basketball or pickleball?
Well, pickleball that converts to two half-cords.
So is that going to be, like, fenced off?
How do you?
Because you know, it's...
Well, you got to fence it so the ball doesn't go into the street, yes.
Well, what about people that want to play that don't live there?
It's not a public access site. It's private property.
It's the amenity for the apartment.
Right.
And I heard you say that there's an easement to connect to the River Trail. Aren't we on the other side? You mean that?
No.
Patch of?
Between the Johns parking ramp and our building? That, we own that, but we're committing that, we got with the Johns family, and we're committing that to a public access.
How do you get to Lansing Shuffle from there?
You, we're going to build a bridge over the river.
Okay.
Because right now, it dead-ends, and you have to go way around.
That's where I was unclear. I appreciate that.
No, the administration has been big on promoting access of the River Trail to the other side, the Impression 5, Arioles Museum, and the shuttle side of the river. So we're in the middle of engineering that now.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Councilman Brown.
Thank you. On this, to, I guess, ask a little bit further to Councilman Jackson's. On this rendering here, I don't have a page number, it says rooftop, Capitol views, observation.
Sure.
Are you talking about there would be a bridge here?
Actually, the bridge is going to be one more bay to the south from the, the park we built 30 years ago, on the southeast corner of the Grand Tower.
Okay.
It's going to be built over the river. The landing spot and angle is better doing it that way.
So like this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it doesn't exist, so then, I guess what I hear you saying is you, you have some land, and if you make a walkway here and a bridge, then people and the residents are able to say, oh, I want to go to Impression 5.
Right.
I won't have to drive.
That's correct. The, we, we built one when we did the Grand Tower. There's a 35-foot-wide public access on the south side of the Grand Tower that goes to an overlooked spot on the river. It's been unused. And the other day, after we were there, I think the, the majority of the Parks and Recreation folks, the administration, everybody involved, said this is too good an asset not to use. So we're going to make the, we can make the bridge come from our spot or the Grand Tower spot. It makes more sense from the Grand Tower spot.
Councilman Spadeford.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for being here. Quick question on the Grand Tower. I don't know that I need the pictures up there. As I remember, the amenity space in the original drawings went farther over.
That's correct.
The street, and the division that you articulated then, what, to me, in a, in a separate meeting, was connecting the, the old Michigan Theater to the river. Is that still the, I see the amenity space is less.
Yes.
Over the river, and now you've got parking deck on the top level. Is that still possible? Are they still connected?
It's absolutely still there. As you come in the atrium, you go to the elevator, you go up one floor, and you walk undercover. Instead of having people go outside, now you walk undercover all the way across to the restaurant and all of the Tower on Grand.
So you can get to all the amenities?
Yes, sir.
The public amenities from Washington Square?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from council?
All right, I've got, I've got a couple of... No, we, we were, we were just stopping for the architecture. We would like to continue, because obviously, that's the piece that...
We'll be brief, because we know you're on a press time.
All right, please continue, thank you.
If you can bring the presentation back up, we'll advance the slide.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You mean to talk about...
Yeah, this is, go ahead.
A lot of folks have said, what's your capital stack? As a director of a major insurance company that did $3 billion worth of loans, that's a topic common for us, and in, in all of my years of strategic fund, capital stack is where does the money come from to build the building? So this is our $228 million of cost to do the three projects. The State of Michigan appropriation at $40 million, MISTHA, Missing Middle, which comes after you finish the building, and it's fully occupied with Missing Middle residents. And the other qualification is, that $8 million lasts 10 years. If you get to year four, and you don't qualify one or two or three of the units, you have to give back that money. So the idea, and, and I applaud MISTHA, the idea is to keep you within that 80 to 120 economic strata, which we should have no problem. Our, our development...
One, one second.
Sure, of course.
I got a question from Vice President Hussein.
So with regard to the three projects, when we're talking about Missing Middle units?
Yep.
Or whether that be workforce, or how many units are we talking out of the entire, what is it, 460?
Well, we have 460 units total. Right. Of which 150 will be Missing Middle minimum. Now, Senate Bill 293 is on the House floor, waiting to be considered. MISTHA ran out of money six months ago. And we were lucky enough to get the Washington Square project in and qualified, and we're at final stages of approval. The, the next burden is it has to be built and occupied fully within that window, which is just about 14 or 15 months from now. So we're in a, we're going to be in a hurry to make sure we qualify. The next 200 million of qualified funding is up to the legislature. If it doesn't happen, if 290, Senate Bill 293 doesn't pass, that means that MISTHA doesn't get any more Missing Middle money. And the new money will be at $50,000 per unit, or $5,000 per year for 10 years to the unit to make it qualify. So then our burden is, what's the difference between what our Missing Middle rent qualification is and our market rate? It's actually a very small number, the differential. But we think Missing Middle is important. We think that it's important to the people who come to work at City Hall, or who work for state government, or who work as teachers in the Lansing school system. Everybody that qualifies, we need them downtown, building a new community. So our, our absolute minimum, if we don't get a dime in addition, will be 150 units.
All right, please continue.
Okay. Developer equity, $40 million. Now, where do these controls come from for the capital stack? The controls come from, as, as Carl Dorshimer knows, the controls come from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Michigan Strategic Fund. They are the grantors of transformational brownfield projects. Of the available, one of the tables we gave you was this last chart, a pie chart. And it shows that 14.7%.
16.47.
16.47%, pardon me.
Numbers, guy.
Of the brownfield contribution comes from the city of Lansing. The other 80...
Four.
84% comes from the state of Michigan and the surrounding county. 16% comes from the city on brownfield contributions. And Carl can deal a little bit more to that. I think it's important also to understand the controls of what a transformational brownfield does to the project. Conventional brownfields have a scope with which you get reimbursed. Brownfield isn't a gift. It's a reimbursement for money that you spent. And you, number one, the community always makes more money than before the project started. And in this condition, we discussed on a previous page, what, what those monies do for the city. What a transformational brownfield is, is the state of Michigan has a qualifying process. For the city of Lansing's population, we have to do a project of at least $75 million. And it has to meet all of the state's, the strategic fund's specifications, which means our profit is limited, our equity is a requirement, our timeline for completion is very specific, and we have an annual true-up. A true-up is the state treasurer and MSF and MEDC's, pardon me, evaluation for did we meet all of the requirements of transformational brownfield incomes? If we don't have enough residents, for example, we don't capture their state income tax. Chasing this cold. If we don't pay enough sales tax during construction, we don't get the money. So this is a do the work, earn under the formula, and get reimbursed. If you don't, you don't get the money. If you make too much money. Let's assume, under a TBP plan, that we start this process with a 7% interest rate. And we go five years down the road, and we refinance. And now the interest rate's 5%, and our interest expense is more than $2 million a year less. On the true-up, by the MEDC and the state treasurer, they take money away. They take proportionately money away from what the city brownfield pays and from what the state pays. So there is a guard dog on the pocketbook of how these projects profit and proceed throughout history. So there is no, give me the money, and I'll keep making money. It's very restricted. Our return on equity in this job is absolutely restricted. So it's not, trust me, we don't make any money until five to seven years down the, down the stream into the job. And everything we lose doesn't count as return on investment when you start to make money. When you lose, you lose.
You took a breath, so I was just going to remind folks that we are closing on 7:20. We are still in committee of the whole, and we still have about four more discussion action items after this presentation, so bear with us. We will get to city council here shortly.
Yeah, I forgive my passion for this. I, I, it means a lot.
So I think we really only have the one more page, which is just some informational stuff about brownfield. I'm sure that, you know, we're glad to cover it, if you'd like, or if you guys would have further questions you'd like to go into right now, that's, that's fine with us as well, I think.
Yeah, I think we're, we're good with the brownfield. I mean, we do have Mr. Dorshimer here, if there's any specific questions to the brownfield. But we do have a question from Councilman Brown.
Oh, thank you, President Garza. Again, thank you for being here. On this capital stack slide, it says developer guaranteed debt, and then it says developer equity. Could you explain that? I'm not sure I understand that.
Okay. The, the strategic fund requires a 20% equity by the developer. Cash upfront kind of equity. How you do the debt is entirely up to you. If we were doing this in Chicago, or maybe Cleveland, certainly in a major city around the Midwest, we would borrow this money from an insurance company, and it would not require personal guarantees on the debt. That's not where we are. We're in Lansing. To get a lender to come here, the Kossick and Genozi families have to sign their life away. We have to sign that no matter what happens to the job, you, the lender, get paid. We guarantee it personally. Now, that's not what you want to do, but it's much like everybody who has a home loan. When you get a loan for your house, you guarantee it personally. But in these cases, the traditional method of financing for this project would be a non-guarantee, just not possible with the marginal financials on these kinds of jobs in a market like ours. Just, you can't get lenders, when you call a, a New York Life up and you say, I, I want you to come to Lansing, they go, yeah, nice city, you know, we heard about you guys, but I'm going to go to Austin or Dallas and invest my money. So the inducement for those kinds of lenders is, who's going to guarantee? Well, right or wrong, we are.
Thank you. I just, when I said equity, I wasn't sure what that meant, so thank you.
Yes.
All right, we have a, Councilman Speder. Oh, yeah, Councilman Speder for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Genozi, Mr. Genozi, might be for someone else. We've, I've heard the term guarantee a couple of times, and y'all have certainly changed the skyline of the city over years. I appreciate all of that. $40 million grant from the state of Michigan through us for three projects. What guarantee does this body have? Looking at our agendas tonight, once we accept and appropriate these dollars, it's, it's pretty much out the door, except for brownfield approvals and things like that. What guarantee do we have that all three will go forward with that grant?
Well, number one, it's easy for me to say, we've never not performed for the city. It's always, everything that we do is our honor. There is no recourse. When we, when we got the $40 million, the advantage of that money, number one, it's a significant contribution to the debt side of the deal. The advantage of it is it's first-in money. Now, we're, Joe and I are about 12 million in, in the properties we own to build these projects. The atrium, for example, we wrote the Johns family a $2 million check for that little spot of land in that building that's along the river next to the Grand Tower. The check that goes to the Michigan Automobile Dealers Association is $3.2 million. So we're going to, and when we look, let's, I guess let's talk about how the $40 million comes. I'm not sure all of you are intimately familiar. We really are. When the grant money comes after it's approved, 10% gets advanced. 10% gets advanced to distribution for reimbursement for monies that we've spent. Every dollar after that is only advanced after we spend the money. So if, if we're into construction, and the big advantage of the $40 million is it's construction interest-free. So of the $180 million of real construction dollars that gets spent besides the soft cost, we're going to save the construction interest on $40 million, which is somewhere over the 30 months, 32 months, somewhere around $2.5 million of savings. Now, the city's, the LEDC and the city's going to make some positive arbitrage on that money, which is wonderful. We'd have loved to have, give you all 40 million, and we only draw it down as we provided legitimate costs. So at the point where we start to draw, after, the first draw, we're going to, over the next few months, start to do work. We're going to do a million dollars worth of demolition on Walnut and Ottawa. That's a qualified deduction, as you can see on the schedule. We can only spend the state's money on things that it's authorized for us to spend in the law.
And that is a direct quote, the light blue box on that page is directly from the legislation that enabled the appropriation.
And along the way, there are things in the development process, probably 50% of those things, that don't qualify, that we've already spent or will spend in companion with that money. So if, if things went bad, that's all, we should, everybody worries about how we get married, not many people worry about how we get divorced. So if things went bad, and sometimes, none of our projects have ever gone bad, but if they'd happened, you have to look to the developers to understand, are they strong enough? Are they strong enough to sustain a hiccup or a problem? Let's assume we see an upswing in construction costs. And the labor part of our job, the labor, actual labor, is $60 million of our cumulative jobs, of the 180 million of hard costs and another 40 million of soft costs. We will be invested, by the time the first check comes from the 40 million, the 4 million, we will be invested 12 to 15 million. So when we sold the legislature on doing this for Lansing, we had to sell them on us too. And they know us, the state of Michigan knows us, because we've been their landlord for 50 years. And we've never not delivered. In, in the middle of the Grand Tower project next door, we were, we were four stories out of the ground, didn't have a building permit and didn't have a construction loan. And we made it, thanks, thanks to the mayor of Detroit and the teachers' pension fund, we made it work. We've always made it work. And I, you, you have to believe in us. We have to believe in the city of Lansing and everybody that lives and works here. So if there's something you want from us, ask us. We'll do the best we can to give it to you. But I can tell you that you've got our heart and soul and you have our commitment, personal investment of 40 million to the job and another guarantee for 140 million to the lender.
Good. All right, Councilman Hussein, followed by Tamerah Carter.
Yeah, and I had the same question. I don't know if I necessarily heard what I wanted to hear, but with regards to, so I'm looking at the capital stack page.
Right.
And one of the things I'm struggling a little bit is that this is, this is the entire project, right? So this is broad-based. Do you have costs broken down by development? And do you have your capital stack broken down by development? And so, because I have to believe you have that information, can that be conveyed to council?
It, it can with the, so I, I wrote to council the other day and said, we have some, some confidential situations with the MEDC. We're still going through that process. And if you want to sign an NDA, which is a, it's an uncomfortable thing, but everybody, the LEDC group has signed an, a nondisclosure. City Attorney's Office treats all of our submissions to the LEDC as nondisclosure. I'm more than happy to let any councilperson sit down and look at every detail of the financial. The MEDC pro forma deals with each individual segment. And I guess the other part of this is, tell me specifically what you want to see, and I'll do my best to get everybody to bend the rules to give you what you want to see.
I, I think I want to see everything that you want me to sign an NDA for. And I, I responded to an email that I wasn't going to sign that.
I know that, yeah. I don't blame you.
That I prefer to have the conversation as part of this presentation.
Well, I can't.
You're telling me that you absolutely can't.
I, I'm not allowed to. The MEDC doesn't work that way.
Okay.
They don't, when, when, and bear with me. I, I was the signer of NDAs for six years.
Right.
As a, as a board member. The information in transformational brownfield projects isn't public information. The city council of Detroit passed, the city council of Detroit passed three jobs for more than $3.5 billion. I'm not sure, I mean, if you don't think we can do it, then that's another problem.
Yeah. Carl, let me ask you another question with regards to the, so this actually goes to Carl. In terms of transformational brownfield, because this, I think largely dependent on receiving that, right, to make this successful and to ensure that finance can be paid back. How many TBPs are actually approved by the state on an annual basis? My, my understanding, and it's, it's limited, that it's a high threshold you have to meet. My understanding is you have to be able to prove transformational economic impact for a city, that the project has to prove to be positively, I don't know, impactful in terms of the state's fiscal position. So how many, how many of these are they awarding a year?
Very few. I think there was one or two in Detroit, and there's another one that's going through the approval process in Detroit. Grand Rapids has one.
Do we have, do we have anything from the state that says this is, this is something that we are absolutely going to support should it come forward? I'm a little concerned that we're assuming-
Well, we meet all the requirements. I don't think that's going to be an issue. The, the Brownfield Act was amended last year. And we had some influence on how that was amended and made sure that Lansing would be eligible. So the way it's divided up is certain-sized communities and certain limits on the dollar amount, and we meet those, so that's not going to be an issue.
My understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, the timeline on those TBPs are typically about 12 to 18 months. My understanding is that for some reason, we're thinking we can expedite that.
Where did you get that timeline?
I got that actually from the state's website. So I'm, I'm curious as to why we think we can, we can pare that down to six months.
Well, number one, it's, Paul's, Paul's very good at influencing people and getting people motivated. And also, we're working, we're meeting on a weekly basis with the development team, and then I think on a bi-weekly basis with MEDC. And so we're working as hard as we can. They know that we want to expedite this. Anytime they ask any question or need anything from us or the development team, we turn it around and give it to them right away. So I think, you know, we can get it done quite a bit shorter than the normal time. And, you know, I'm shooting, I'm thinking that we could get this to our brownfield board perhaps by May or June. And then it would, assuming it's approved by our brownfield board, it would come to council. Typically takes, you know, a month and a half to get through council, and then it would go to MSF. So, you know, you're talking late summer, mid to late summer, and then approved by MSF, early fall, late summer, something like that. So I, I think that's a realistic timetable.
Real quick question for the Genozi team, sorry.
Sure.
I'm still, you know, we're looking at the number of doors downtown, looking at the variety of, of housing that we're looking at here. We're looking at price points, that type of thing. You have to, when you, I mean, when you take risks, you're taking calculated risks. So I'm assuming that we're leaning on some type of market analysis.
Of course.
Even, even when obviously you made the case to the state, what, do you have those studies? Do you have that info? What, I mean, what did you lean on?
We actually used the study from Lansing.
Is that what you?
A, a portion of it, yeah. I mean, we had a number of sources, but one of them was certainly the study that DLI had commissioned.
Have you guys completed an economic impact study for this, this project?
No.
No.
Why?
I mean, I, we can, we can debate the merit of that, but I, I think that is important when we're talking about, you know, this type of, this type of investment, this type of investment by the state, by the taxpayers, both the city and the state. I, I would want to see an economic impact study.
But what about the economic impact study would make us, I'm sorry?
Let me ask you another question, because I know we're limited on time.
Sure.
When, when you went to the state, I think it sounded like to me you made a heck of a case, and you, it sounds like you leaned on our study, that we need, we need housing, right? And that could be transformational facility of the city of Lansing. And it sounds like the state agreed, but they also, the way that they actually wrote this line item in the budget was very generic. And it, I, I guess I'm curious, was there any, I would assume the answer is no, was there any bidding process with the city, with the state legislature? I'm assuming no. And, and the reason why I ask that is I'm not certain that, that the legislature contemplated us absolutely giving these dollars to this particular developer for this particular development, particularly because it's changed so much. Went from three projects to four, then back to three. There's footnotes in some, on some of these pages that, I mean, it just, it says, you know, all sizes, counts and other values presented here represent the current state of architectural development. These values may change pending final site construction. I mean, some of this still seems a little half-baked. So I'm just curious, how did we get here with this particular developer and this particular development? So again, why, why would we not go through potential bidding processes? And I guess I am asking, because I, I know the answer's no. So I guess I am asking the administration.
Mayor Shor.
Yeah, we were, we were told, as recently as this weekend, I was told by Rep. Whitworth that the intention of the dollars were for this project. Senator Anthony has told me that if, if anything were to happen where it were to go through that project, that she would want to know about it in advance. I, I do believe that was the intention when it was put in. Legislature can't write specifically to a person. We certainly, you know, if council decides that, that they don't like this project, they don't want this project, and the dollars are there, then we can bid it out and we would bid it out. But it's my understanding from the legislature that the intention was for these dollars. And should it not be approved, then-
We would try and find something else to do with the $40 million before it expires, which we would bid out.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have Councilwoman Carter.
Thank you, President Garza. Adam touched a little bit about my question regarding timeframe. I just was curious to know, do we, do you know, is this a realistic timeframe with impacting the current downtown residents and the occupancy, especially with the Washington Square development? Has communication, or is there a plan for communication that will impact those businesses that are currently in downtown?
The Washington Square building is currently vacant. The Department of Community Health has moved out at the end of their lease, and the building is currently vacant, so it really won't impact anybody there. We've started ineligible demolition activities, ineligible for reimbursement in that project. It's, the drawings are done. That building could start construction in two weeks, three weeks from approval.
I would also add to, to your point, so you're maybe speaking of DLI and InstiPrints and the other downtown businesses one building over. We have been very upfront and transparent with them about our timeline and our process. We're working with InstiPrints certainly to find them another location in the central business district downtown. Same with DLI. We think Middle Village is a fantastic thing and needs to be put more prominently in the space downtown, and so we're working with them to find a place. But certainly, none of our commercial tenants, if you will, will be sort of surprised by any of this. We've been very upfront with them about what our timeline is and what we're going to do.
We've given, they've accepted relocation alternatives at a financial gain. So everybody should be happy about their new place. I know that Insti is and DLI, we contribute one-half the rent of DLI. So DLI is moving to the atrium so that they can have an inside space for retail, and they're very excited. We're in the middle of demolition for that space right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Garza. Carl, I just couldn't hear you exactly when you were speaking about the transformational brownfield. Could you, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Terms of the timetable?
Well, it is eligible in the timeframe. I just couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Well, because the brownfield plan captures more than just property taxes, which is a benefit to the city in terms of it also captures stake-
Can you move the mic up? It's a little hard, I'm sorry to hear you.
Can you hear me now? Better? Yeah?
Lean into it.
How about that? All right.
So two, two things. One, transformational brownfield allows us, the brownfield authority, to capture more taxes than we normally do, but they're state taxes. They're not local, they're not city. And that's good, because when you look at the chart to see the proportion of what we expect to capture, the proportion of that represents city taxes is quite small. It's because the majority, a big piece of it, is going to be state taxes, right? Therefore, it's a very complicated process to put together the plan, and MEDC is involved in it right up front. Where typically a normal plan, we, the brownfield authority, work with the developer, we get it ready, goes to our board, comes to council, then it goes to the state. Now, the state, they, they get involved with it right up front, and they have their underwriting process. It's very complex, because now we're capturing a lot of state taxes, and they want to make sure that if, that if we're capturing them, they're put to use, they're on eligible activities and the projects that actually get done. So, but that's good, because that's an extra set of eyes and due diligence that they're doing to, to make sure that the developer does what they say they're going to do. And so the second part is it takes a long time, though. That thorough process takes time. So right now, we're just about to the point where we can draft, the first draft of the transformational brownfield plan. We're getting there. That, that takes a while. Ultimately, I believe that we can bring it to our board, probably in May or June, the brownfield board, and then assuming they approve it, then it comes to council for your approval. That typically takes a month and a half or two to go through that process. So that puts us into July, August. And then ultimately, if it approves, council approves it, and you'll see all the details and where all the taxes go and what the estimates are and all the agreements at that point. So, you know, there won't be any, any details that you don't know. So in that way, you know, you can, you can be sure that, you know, you've seen everything and all the numbers and who's getting what, how those taxes are being allocated, because it's quite complex. It's in the TIFA, two projects in the TIFA. There's, we have a pass-through that goes to the TIFA and to the city. There's voted debt we don't capture, so it gets quite complex. But we'll be, we'll come back and we'll explain it to you on how that works, and we're available to do that even beforehand, once we get it shaped up. So it goes through that process. You're looking at mid to late summer, approved by council, and then it goes to the MSF board. It takes like a month to get on their agenda. So now you're looking at late summer, early fall for final approval at that point. There is a lookback period, though, where the developer can begin eligible brownfield activities up to 90 days prior to the final approval, but they do that at their own risk. Because if the plan's not approved in a timely manner, then they don't get reimbursed for whatever, whatever they've done, so. But, so that's the process. So it takes, yes, we've been told six to nine months, we think we can expedite that a little- We think we can expedite that a little quicker, but yeah, that, that's what I expect.
Thank you. And so, to Councilman Hussein's question about, is this project eligible, or I guess meet the requirements based on all of those complexities?
It does. It does. It meets the Brownfield Act, the actual law, and it fits.
So, that gives you no concern?
No concern at all. It's more making the numbers work, right? It's more the details, and then all the other agreements that go with this. There's a development agreement, there's a reimbursement agreement, there's, there's an intergovernmental agreement, because this thing's in the Tifa. But we've done all that before. But it's just, it's more complex, because we're talking about additional taxes we're capturing. So, but that's different, you know? Meeting the minimum requirements that are necessary to be a transformational Brownfield, I don't have any issues with that at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from council at this time?
All right, I just have a couple. Couple of mine were already answered. I'll be quick. I know that we're still waiting for council to start. First off, I appreciate you guys being down here. I appreciate, obviously, if it wasn't for you guys lobbying the legislature, we wouldn't be here to discuss this right now. And I do believe it's transformational for our city, especially downtown. So, thanks again. Now, now, we had the building trades here speaking in favor of this project earlier. Can you talk a little bit about project labor agreements? I hear that that's a potential that happens for this project?
We have one. We're turning our draft back. Of all the buildings, of the $130 or $40 million worth of buildings we've built downtown, they've all been union jobs. So, all of our major buildings are union jobs. That's just the way we work. And we owe them, and they'll all be Lansing jobs. You know, we're not, we're not looking at plumbers from east side of Detroit. We're looking at companies from Lansing. We're interviewing companies from Lansing to do our work.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. Now, I see that you have the three different projects here. Do you have like a Phase One, a Phase Two, a Phase Three? Because from your, from your presentation here, it looks potentially like you may start at the North Walnut Capital Tower, move to South Washington, and then hit the Grand?
So, no. The Washington Square Building will be first. It's ready.
Okay.
To go. The Walnut Ottawa Corner has a complete block of demolition. So, it's extensive. All the public utilities have to be moved. So, we're prepared. We've told the residents and tenants, residents, tenants in that block that they have to be out by June 1, because we looked into the transformational Brownfield approval. We come back 60 days to be safe, and we can start that project. We can also start South Grand at the same time, the Tower on Grand.
We do get this question a lot. The truth is that all three of these projects have sort of a different construction timeline, but they all need to begin on a similar timeframe. As you can see, we're sort of staggering them by quarter, because they all have different levels of complexity that we want to get taken care of up front. We've been working on these projects architecturally, from an engineering standpoint, simultaneously as we've moved them forward. We haven't said, okay, we're going to architecturally handle Washington Square, then Capitol Tower, then Tower on Grand. We knew that we needed to push the start of these projects as quickly as possible once we were able, because time is of the essence for downtown in our belief.
We did a page turn on the Washington Square construction set last week. That means we're at final specification. A page turn is an internal trade thing that we do. We go through it with the architects and this, the construction manager. And then, the next set is to go to what we call CDs in the next week or so, and then those go out for bid. The Tower on Grand and the Capitol Tower are 30 days or so behind that.
All right. I appreciate that. I don't see any further questions or comments at this time, so I appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on with our-
Appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing us the time this evening.
Yeah.
Sorry we spread out here. Okay. Moving on down, we have discussion action item, Resolution E, a reappointment of Stephen Young, Elected Officers' Compensation Commission, term to expire October 1, 2030. So, as you see, we have an application and the resume in our packet. This is a reappointment, so Mr. Young should not be here this evening. And with that, I would move to, with Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So, that is for the body for questions and comments. I will move the resolution of reappointment for Stephen Young to the Elected Officers' Compensation Commission for a term to expire October 1, 2030.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Are there any questions or concerns? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. All right. Moving on from that, we are to Resolution F, polling places, temporary relocation of multiple precincts for May 2024 special election. Do we have our city clerk, Mr. Swob, you want to come down and give us a brief summary of this for the public?
Thank you, President Garza. Yeah, we heard from the Lansing School District regarding the election that we have in May, and because that is a school day, they have asked us to not use their educational facilities for the election due to security and building access issues. So, we came up with a proposal to move, and it is quite a number of voters that are impacted by this, 20,000 registered voters, roughly a quarter of the city's registered voters, that will have to be notified of their polling place move through postal mail. We will also notify them by email and with signage at the, at the polling locations that will not be active for the May election. But the deadline and, under state law, is to make these moves 60 days ahead, so this is the final council meeting. That's the opportunity to meet that deadline.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Oh, Councilman Jackson, followed by Vice President Hussein.
Just quickly, I noticed the signage at the polling place when I picked my daughter up at Luton, and it's a QR code. Fair enough for most people, but I was just looking, oh, there's a sign. It's going to tell me where it is, but then it didn't. And I didn't have my phone. Just, you know, for the few that, there could be a write-in, just to consider that.
Sure. And, yeah, I know at different times, we have places that are, where not all the voters are moved to the same place. That makes it a little bit more difficult, so the QR code can be of assistance in that circumstance.
Okay. Vice President Hussein.
I guess I'm just curious real quick. So, I know that, and this did affect a number of precincts, but I know that, as an example, in War III, we have two precincts that typically voted white rich. I think what we're proposing is that one now shifts to a free disbursement, and another switches over to, I think it's Dr. Eva Evans', Senator, formerly known as Elmer's. What, I'm just curious, what types of metrics, considerations, measure, whatever, are used to, for you to determine what would make sense for the population of that precinct?
I just really look at the boundaries of what the precincts are and what seems to be the closest location for those folks that is already an active polling place. You know, it's hard to have someplace be a polling place just for one election if they aren't already one, so we're moving them basically in with another polling place and just looking at the geography of the polling place and where, where it makes sense.
Okay. And then, to, I think to Brian's point, I appreciate the mailings and the sign is certain, but I would assume we're going to use city's social media, as well as city's website, things of that nature, to try to get this out on as many different fronts as possible.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Seeing none, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. Seeing enough you. And with that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So, I would move the resolution that pertains to polling places and the temporary relocation of multiple precincts for the May 7, 2024 special election.
Okay. All right. Moving down, we are, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. With, with, with the proper motion in place, do we have any questions or concerns? Seeing no questions or concerns, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Moving down, we have Resolution G and H, and if people have been paying attention, these two resolutions are similar. Looks like the, similar resolutions to the ones that City Committee of the Whole passed back in January 22nd. And with that, I'm going to have our city attorney do some explaining of how these two resolutions came about.
Yes. And so, this was at the Committee of the Whole, and the two resolutions were passed out and are on the council agenda today. They were based upon my advice at that time, that those resolutions were proper, and looking at those resolutions as approving grants and not dealing with them as supplemental appropriations, that's why I advised you, you could put it on the agenda for tonight. Going back to the office, because that was a short timeframe, I looked at my opinion back in 1997 or 1996 on the Boys and Girls Club, and all of the opinions that followed it, and that was contrary to the advice I gave you. So, my recommendation is that when you get to the city council, the two resolutions that are on the agenda, you should put on file. I mean, that's basically where it is. So, took a lot of thought, a lot of analysis, and again, I had been through this issue 30 years ago, and I must have just forgotten about it. Okay.
All right. I appreciate that explanation. With that explanation, are there any questions or comments from council? Okay. Councilmen calls.
Thank you, President Garza. Jim, are you familiar with Warren City Council v. Faouts?
I know of the case that's out there. I'm familiar with the controversy that's going on in Warren City and Faouts, yes. If, you know, there, there are case law, and then there's this constant controversy going on.
So, so this was actually decided by the Michigan Court of Appeals back end of the year of 2022? Where it said that, essentially, your opinion from what I read today with the Boys, is it Boys and Girls Club, they said the opposite.
Okay. There's a whole difference also whether there's something in the charter or not in the charter. You have to take the whole interpretation of the charter in rendering the opinion. That's what made it a little difficult. But we analyzed this and believe that the opinion in Boys and Girls Club, although not exactly on point, is close enough to set the framework and the, for the 2006 opinion. So, we've analyzed this and believe we are correct.
So, even with the Warren City Council and Faouts decision?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We have a strong mayor form of government, and basically the-
They do too, as well, right?
The opinion, I'm not sure.
They, they do. I'm sorry. I know the answer, yes, they do.
All right. But it's been a long history of the mayor proposes, council disposes, you know?
Sure. And I understand that. I'm, I was just looking at this court ruling, and they were very specific that that mayor would have to accept what council, their council decided if they went that route.
Again, a lot of it, and I get it, I don't have it in front of me. I did look at Warren versus Faouts. I did look at Stecker and-
Because there's several lawsuits.
Several lawsuits that happened. And you've got to also look at the charter and the language in the charter, interpretation of the charter.
Has that analysis been done with this case?
Yeah. We looked at, I mean, this caused a lot of legal discussion in our office, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. With that, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So, very quickly, because this is kind of a messy situation of sorts, we have the two resolutions that are up for consideration tonight, that obviously, we're going to move to, to table with the explanation from, not table, sorry, place on file with the explanation for the city attorney. We, as leadership, did meet with the administration, because we did feel a number of concerns from this body with regards to the two resolutions, the actual acceptance and the actual appropriation. And there were folks that said, look, there's, I just want a little bit more time to make sure that some of the questions are answered, that some of the, as an example, some of the things that we talked about tonight with assurances and capital stacks and costs broken down by project and et cetera, that, that we actually have our hands on those things before we, before we actually appropriate. So, we talked about a couple of different tools that we could use, and one was a resolution to essentially accept and appropriate into a reserve account. The administration took a look at that, also talked to state legislature, I believe it was actually MEDC, but in any event, to see if that was something that we could do. It sounded as if it was. However, with Boji, Boji's team, I should say, Ron Boji's team coming in on the 11th, we also discussed the possibility of tabling these two resolutions as opposed to receiving and appropriating into a reserve account that would essentially need some measure of council action. So, most likely by a resolution to move those dollars out once. All right. Questions were answered, and our concerns were swaged. And so, that was palatable, at least to leadership. Again, we don't, we don't speak for the council, we don't speak for this body, but we also thought it might be cleaner to take a look at these again on March 11th collectively, since we do have Ron Boji coming into our Committee of the Whole to present, to answer questions, and the like. And so, what I'm going to do, and I speak collectively, obviously, but I'm going to move these respectively, with that explanation, I'm going to move this resolution for grant acceptance, Michigan State Housing Development Authority Housing Development Fund Grant for Transformational Housing. I'm going to move to table that, so we can take that up again in Committee of the Whole on March 11th. We have assurances from the state that we do have a few months on this. We, that was one of the, you know, most important pieces in terms of the actual tabling piece. So, we were set to receive and appropriate into a reserve account until we got that assurance. They haven't given us a drop-dead date, unless I'm, something has come since that time, but they have said we have a few months, and our, and municipalities have a few months to make sure they're doing their due diligence to accept and to appropriate. So, with that being said, I would move the resolution, I would move to table the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns? Councilman Brown.
Thank you. So, to make sure I understand, so are, are we able to, I guess, accept the money and put it in a reserve for both of these grants, and then still move forward with March 11th? I, or am I not understanding that correctly?
So, so at least my understanding, and certainly Jim or Law can intervene or the administration, my understanding is there's a couple of different paths we can take. We can, we could move if, but it would have to come through a substitute. We can't, as a city council, create that resolution, but we could get a substitute resolution from the administration where they actually are essentially appropriating to a reserve account, if that makes sense. And so, we're passing that. Or we could, we could table. And so, we thought as leadership and as an administrative team, that that would be the cleanest way. If I mess that up in some way, feel free to-
Yeah. Not to, to add to what the Vice President was saying. Thank you, Mr. President. We had talked about that. I think Legal had some concerns with the, with the putting it into a reserve account as a grant. In essence, does that actually appropriate it? Which is why we checked with the state, and the state said, you've got a little bit of time. You know, we know it has to be spent by a certain date. The question was, is there a deadline? And I talked to Amy Hovey over the weekend, and she said, you're, you're okay to take your time to, to, to work on, just remember that there's a drop-dead date. So, this is the preferred way, because Legal had concerns with, is there, is it accepted appropriate into a reserve account? Is that actually appropriating the money? And they, again, they were, they were not so sure. So, we thought it's best to just hold off, because the state is not going to come down on hardness, we're not going to lose the money.
Okay. You said, you just said that you spoke with MEDC regarding?
Mishda.
Mishda? What did they say? What did they say? Did they say you could or could not do that?
They don't have an opinion on that. They just want to know that the money's going to be appropriated and that we have a contract with both them and whoever is going to get the money. In terms of the process, they didn't really opine on the process.
Mr. Schmierke, do you mind commenting on that?
I just want to follow up what the mayor said. What he is referring to is an opinion that is known as a control account opinion, which we have written in the past and said you can't do that. And I just want to, that's what the mayor, I believe, is referring to.
I mean, I think at the, I think at the end of the day, when I spoke with council leadership, we were all agreed on the result. The result was, let's let council take their time and have their questions answered. I think I've spoken to almost all of you, and all of you have said, we want to make sure, you know, we're not a rubber stamp here, we have real questions, and I agree. This is a legislative decision that needs to happen, and so I am fine with, I was fine with whatever. Legal had problems with doing it one way. We agreed, as long as we can, we can hold off and the state's not going to tell us that we're losing the money, which they're not. You can go to March 11th, I mean, you can, you've got some time. So I do think that this is the wise move, in my opinion, and I think leadership has done a lot of work on this council's behalf to try and figure out the best way to make sure that questions can be answered. So I do commend both of the leaders.
You all set? Okay, any other questions or concerns? We do have a motion to table item G.
I was going to raise an issue, I'll raise it with both of them. I'm fine doing this this way. I was going to suggest tabling G and moving item H. Item H, accepting the dollars and getting that 50% into city coffers would get money into our coffers, of which would be great to have it there, and going forward with the project that Mr. Boji's bringing next week would require a separate vote of this body because we'd have to sign a purchase agreement and all those types of things. So if everyone's in agreement, we should table both of them, that's fine. I was just going to suggest maybe moving along the other one since it's already, since it has another set of gatekeeping on it, but I'm not going to sit here and say we should do something different if everyone's agreeing.
Yeah, and I think we actually had that conversation as well, because on item H, obviously, just, you know, any potential project in general, we have more bites at the apple on that one, so we were a little bit more comfortable with that, too. I think we, we just thought it would be cleaner that way, we're going to have Ron in that night. But, but again, what's on the table right now is G. That being said, I do want to say this one thing, and exactly, you know, exactly because we're still, you know, talking about process and what's the right process, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to table, because it seems like there's still a little bit of miscommunication and confusion and things of that nature. But what I do want to signal to everybody that's been involved is that, number one, we are incredibly thankful that the state legislature has prioritized the capital city. That's number one. And number two, we are absolutely wanting to see transformational projects come from these dollars. But that is why we are trying to take just a little bit of time. There's all this consternation out there, and it absolutely blows my mind that people are losing it because this council wants to take a few meetings to discuss and to make sure that our questions are answered and to make sure, and I'm going to tell you this right now, there's already been some concessions that will be spoken about in a few weeks where we've been able, through our questions and through our comments and through our diligence, to move these projects down the field. And that's exactly what you want to, want to happen at this legislative level. And so for folks that are out there that might want to email us and tell us, you know, that, you know, we're insane for slowing up the process, I want you to know right now that we already have better deals for the city that are being contemplated, right? Nothing is done until it's done, and it goes through the process, but because we're doing our diligence, and so understand, you know, we want to move these dollars, we're excited about the potential for these projects, and all we're doing is exactly what we were elected to do. So with that being said, the motion is on the table.
Okay, we have a proper motion to table item G. Any further questions or concerns? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of tabling item G, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. Now we're down to Resolution H. Vice President Hussein.
And so based on the earlier explanation, I would also move to table resolution for grant acceptance for the MEDC transformational MUNA infrastructure for New City Campus.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions or concerns? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right, motion passes. All right, well, thank you. Okay, so it looks like we are to, a couple minutes after 2, a couple minutes, 2 minutes after 8. Thank you. She's always keeping me in check over here.